Order Councilwoman Harris, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
All who are able, please rise. At this meeting, please help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us, and above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Now join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as strong.
Chief. There you are. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce you and recognize our officer and employee of the third quarter, and I'd ask Officer Irwin and Lindora Anderson to step forward. Just right here. That's good. As you guys know, and just to recap, we recognize an officer and one of our professional staff, our civilians, as an employee and officer of the quarter for each quarter during the year, and then at the end of the year, we select an officer of the year and an employee of the year. And so this is the also an employee of the third quarter. And we have an awards committee that actually makes the selection based on nominations. So at this time, I'll go over PSR Lindora Anderson and what she's done. So first, let me just say Lindora works the night shift as a PSR, and she's doing an excellent job, and it's one of those unsung heroes of the department, because everybody that comes to the police department, whether it's in daytime or nighttime, goes to the PSR desk, and they have to deal with a lot of difficult people at times, and she does a fantastic job, so certainly appreciate her. I'm going to read this. It says, PSR Anderson continues to go above and beyond her expected duties as a PSR. She regularly comes in early to help fill in and relieve the other shift PSRs. She never hesitates to come in on her off days to fill in on a shift. She has been a tremendous help with the overflow of paperwork and GCIC responsibilities. She has also done an excellent job training the new PSRs as well. During every shift, she makes sure that officers' paperwork is turned correctly in with no errors, which helps tremendously on the administrative side. She's always kind and polite to the public and assist them in any way possible. Lindora is a consistent hard worker who goes above and beyond her normal job duties without neglecting her regular duties. So I want to recognize her and thank her for her job. Thank you. I'll give your plaque to you in just a second. And then we have Officer Christopher Irwin. He's one of our K-9 handlers. Officer Irwin is a highly motivated K-9 officer who is not only conscientious about his own job, but also consistently assists the Patrol Division and others above and beyond. When help is needed with staffing issues, Officer Irwin is always one of the first to step up to the plate. In addition, Officer Irwin has volunteered to be a senior instructor for the Dunwoody Public Safety Cadets, which is our former Explorer Program, for many years and serves as a robot operator for the North Metro SWAT team. Y'all may not, some of y'all that are new may not realize, we have a robot that we got through a grant some years ago, and Officer Irwin is one of the operators, and so they're able to send that in in situations when the SWAT team needs to to clear a house or an apartment without having to send and put a officer at risk. So it's a great tool for us to use. Officer Irwin personifies the ideals of teamwork and professionalism. He has consistently shown his willingness to be a team player and to offer positive ideas to better the public's perception of our department and law enforcement as a whole. So congratulations, Officer Irwin.
We are so incredibly proud of our Dunwoody Police Department and grateful for your service, your service. And we appreciate you all. We know you, each of you goes above and beyond on a regular basis for our community, so thank you all. And congratulations to our award winners. Next, so the administration, the office is being delayed because the officer is under the weather. So next is public comments. I have one card, Tom Simon. Make sure the green light's on the microphone, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Green light on the mic. Okay, here, oh.
And just make sure you talk into the microphone, please.
Into the mic. Got it. Okay. My name's Tom Simon of 2212 Stevens Walk. Been talking about the path on Tilly Mill. One other thing, public records request for documents known as construction plan requirements under the city's public transportation plan requirements prepared by PDP. Only seven documents have been received from the city. We want to know where the other 25 studies documents that have been requested. The other documents are November 16th and 25th email I sent out, and a fourth alternate plan for the west side of Tilly Mill for a path. On the 17th of November, we met Stevens Walk people with Tom Lambert, Michael Smith, and Ishri Sankar. Talked about their third alternate plan, which was the same as the first and second, unacceptable. We developed a fourth alternate plan. That plan is a path from Mount Vernon Road connecting to the west side of Mount Vernon Place and connecting to the west side of Tilly Mill Road all the way to Womack Road. This is the only path that makes any sense on Tilly Mill Road for the following reasons. Or one other things. Lambert, Smith, and Sankar agreed that the path was feasible, possible, and it could solve a lot of the concerns at the MJCC entrance, and they would look at it seriously. Well, the following reasons why the path on the west side of Tilly Mill is the only path. No destruction of neighborhood entrances on the west side, no destruction of hundreds of trees, as in the case on the east side. No crossing of any major street on the path on the west side of Mount Vernon Place down the west side of Tilly Mill all the way to Womack. There will be a stop sign at Mount Vernon Place going south at the intersection of Tilly Mill. This will require vehicles to stop completely. Eliminate speeding vehicles going south on Mount Vernon Place and all the way down Tilly Mill. And it will reduce traffic also. There will be a stoplight at the MJCC entrance, so they can control traffic in and out of that MJCC from vehicles, vehicles traveling north and south. This eliminates any concern at the MJCC entrance. Also, there will be stop signs on the path on each side of the MJCC entrance, thereby requiring walkers, runners, bikers to stop on the path at the MJCC entrance on either side before proceeding. This path configuration enhances safety and security at the MJCC entrance and provides safety and security where none exists now at the present MJCC entrance. This is the path, I don't know if you can see it or not. I'm going to not be able to. Well, anyway. You'll get a copy of it, but basically, again, it runs down Mount Vernon Place on the west side, connects on the west side of Tilly Mill Road all the way down. It's the only thing, it's the only path to make common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that concludes public comment, because I don't have any other cards, no other cards. And we'll have another public comment section at the end of the meeting, should anyone desire to speak. All right, next is consent. No, no report, sorry, turn the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are about to, between, oops, that's not it, that's alcohol licensing requirements. Hold on a second, which I have absolutely no desire to talk about. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a presentation that Councilman Lambert and I wanted to bring to you rather quickly. The Citizen Capital Committee worked diligently over the past two months, and we wanted to make that report public, and this is the presentation of it tonight. First off, to give some background for those that are unfamiliar with it, the Citizen Capital Committee was an outgrowth over more than a dozen public meetings that happened in the spring of 2022 concerning capital construction, the capital needs of the city. The committee consisted of nine citizens led by a non-voting council member, Commissioner Lambert, and each council member in the city was able to put one person on it, so it actually was not just a handpicked, it was literally one from everywhere. They met five times over eight weeks, and they will, again, and you'll see during the presentation, but this extends for one more meeting in the spring of 2023. The topics for the five weeks that they met, first one was an overview of just capital in general. Second meeting focused on transportation, the third on parks, the fourth on paths and trails, and the fifth one was a recap of the previous three and started working with next steps. The goal of the committee was to develop a list or list of important capital needs of the city. While funding is important in all capital construction, they were also charged that cost was not their object to talk about. Their object was to talk about what the needs are, worry about the funding as a second step. For each topic that was presented before this committee, transportation, parks, and trails, the committee was presented with a list of projects by staff. They were just basically what we've been talking about for the past year and pulled from various sources that we've had. Staff then presented the details on all these presentations, or each project to them in a Q and A format. And after each session, the committee members had homework. Basically, they were charged, here's your list of sometimes 10, sometimes 30 projects. Much as we've done with the council as a full council, please rank them in priority order, but don't rank them all. We're trying to make cream rise to the top, and those projects where there's a little interest to show that, basically to make it so that the prioritization can start. A revised list of each category was then scored by each committee member. They were allowed to add things to it in between meetings and given a deadline on it. This showed scores of both depth, meaning that out of the nine members, five scored it, six scored it, eight scored it, and breadth, what the total score was, and they were shown both of those. Now, at the final committee meeting, after there were three separate ranking lists, ones for parks, one for trails, and one for transportation, they, we came this, we did kind of like a draft board, put a big whiteboard in this room, and they got to talk about which projects on there were important. Did they want to do one list or three lists? Well, they started putting stuff up there, and very quickly, I want to say within two or three minutes, they said, we need to put a pause on trails. And what they were doing was they realized they were going to put things on there, and the current master trail study is underway. So the end result, which you're going to see in a second, is just one trail is currently recommended. I want to use that phrase currently on there, because they said that one that's much more park-related than is trail-related, and then they went ahead and prioritized but things for parks and things for transportation. The committee then said we, they would like to meet in the spring after the path committee's full work is done, and then go back and revisit the trail portion. Now, as you see here are the score sheets that they've done for best way to tell it to the public is blue was scored more higher. The column underscores the total points and the count is the number of people. So like, for instance, the first thing on this list is 37 points. Seven out of the nine committee members scored Petrie Middle School turf. Okay, the blue makes it rise to the top. The ones that are highlighted in yellow here are the ones that the committee in the end said, we, we, the committee, deem these important for capital use. So as you see, almost all the top projects ranked high from them. And then they put three others on there. One is the Brook Run Park Playground Replacement. One is the indoor batting facility. And the third one at the very bottom, they did not rank it all, but they, they felt through emotion and they voted for it, that green space for the purchase and development of a dedicated softball field should be on a park list. So that's what they came up with for their list for parks. For transportation, it's much the same way, even though this looks a little bit spaced out. Most of the projects that were mentioned were those that five or six or seven of the committee members thought in favor of. And then just for reference and for public record, we put the ones that weren't scored at all on here also. On the trail list, you can just see there is the one project that was mentioned, and they said, we're going to put a pause on it until the full path is. And this one, they, they all felt that because it was park-related, it's not trail in the typical sense of the world. And again, that's just a quick version of this, but we wanted to make sure that the public had heard what the things of the committee were, and Councilman Lambert and I can answer any questions at this time.
Okay. Tom, would you like to lead us off, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to add, add a few things to, to what Jay said, and, and I'd like to begin by thanking very sincerely our staff that put a lot of extra effort into this committee. Michael, Ishri, Brent, Richard, Sharon, Jessica, and especially Jay. Jay did a lot of the heavy lifting throughout this. Jay and I met often throughout the, the two months or two, three months that we were meeting. Had a lot of discussions, because this was something new, and what would be the best way to facilitate it? And I, I genuinely appreciate all of his help and, and good ideas and suggestions. And then, of course, I want to thank the committee, too. We had a Sue, who I think I saw sneak in here at some point. Steve, Sarah, Abby, Marissa, Remy, Brian, Joe, and Bob. We had a very diverse group as far as people that were relatively new residents of Dunwoody, people that have lived here for decades. We had people that have been involved with city committees before, and people that this was the first time experiencing the inner workings of city government. And all of that was a good thing. We had, we had people, younger people with families and retired people. So we had, we had, we had a, a good mix of viewpoints on, on the committee, and I got the impression that everyone on the committee took their appointment and their role on that committee very seriously. There was, as Jay pointed out, a lot of homework. I think at the first meeting, when we mentioned homework, a couple eyebrows went, whoa. But, but I, I, I got the sense that people took that very seriously and actually did their homework, including field trips and, and people just going out on their own and looking at sites with their own eyes instead of just reading off a list. So I genuinely want to thank the committee. I think they did a very good job. I think they asked very insightful questions, and I think they did put the work in and did their homework, and, and the result was was what I believe a, a good representation of what the public views as our important projects moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it to the rest of the council for questions.
Okay, so we'll start, I guess, just down here. John, you have any questions?
Well, I too appreciate the work of the committee and all the citizens that were on it and the members of staff that worked hard for it. I guess my next question is, where are the next steps? What do we do with this list? How, what's, what's the actions of our committee up here versus what they put on paper? What's the intention, what's the next intention? That's what I don't know.
Going back to the we, we've worked so long together that we now part of this charge from the council was for citizens to give input on to give you, the collective city council, a list for which to determine, do we need to seek funding for these, these projects? They've let the cream rise to the top. We weren't quite sure where it was going to settle. So you have something before you to work on between now and with the delineation of the path study being completed, at that point deciding whether or not to call for an election for funding sources.
Okay, or the ranking aspects, or were they, I mean, it's, to me, I appreciate all the work done. I was here at a number of the meetings, was listening in. I may not have agreed with all the points of some of the rankings of, you know, maybe the, the water feature at Brook Run Park, where I was thinking maybe there was based on other needs of other parts of the city or spread it around and not, not overdoing Brook Run. I mean, there's, there's nits and picks I could pick at each thing, and I was trying to figure out what's our goal, what's the next steps for us? I had questions on how the yellow was chosen, and Jay, you tried to explain it, I guess. I didn't understand how things were with lower scores, things in the red, how did they get chosen as their important items when the voting wasn't deemed important to them?
No, nothing that was red ended up floating to the top, I don't think.
Yeah, no, the parks there are.
There's a number of red things.
Think of it this way. What they did was they said they needed to go back and rank these separately, because they had to talk about them as topics, because it's hard to rank a park versus a sidewalk improvement. So rank those. Then at the last meeting, they were given the charge, you as a committee, what do you deem important for the city to invest in? What are the things that you, your communication to the full city council are important? The things that aren't on that list are not saying they're not important. It's just saying to use the word, this is the most valuable, the most tangible thing that you have to put up there, knowing this is something the city needs. So they looked at that, and then through consensus approved the final list.
So it was basically a second bite at the apple. They brought everything back up. They had a discussion amongst themselves and made it yellow, I guess.
And, and two things also gravitated from that. One was a pause on trails. And the second was green space purchase for specific for softball, and they were very adamant that that was a specific need of the community. So they added that as the second bite of the apple when it wasn't on any list beforehand.
Great, thank you. I guess based on the rankings, I really wish that we modified our 2023 budget to fund universally desired projects for, that are wanted and desired now by a large portion of the staff, including this committee, versus funding trails that we've told the citizens that we are hoping to slow down on, but right now we are funding trails continuing to 2023 prior to the decisions of the committee, prior to the work that's being done. I would prefer that we work on some of these universally accepted things that the community, that the community, I believe, wants as a whole. But that's just me. I do appreciate the work of the committee. I appreciate the work of staff, and I look forward to using this data in the future for funding the important needs of our community. Thank you.
Joe.
So I think potentially, either A, we wait to a retreat, or B, we have a work session where we really go into the nuts and bolts, right? And we kind of need to marry up the CIP with the SPOST and reevaluate this current CIP five-year project list, and ID that or reprioritize those things as well. These are non-CIP, clarify the list. Are, is there anything that's on the CIP that's in these lists? Okay, completely not on the CIP, okay. Regardless, we can still revisit the CIP potential as well and, and look at it holistically for prioritization. I think that makes sense. And then we defer, define the funding source second, right? But no, I'm a big process guy. I'm a big transparency guy. This has been great. I appreciate the level of transparency that we're giving to the citizens of allowing them to have the feedback, have the input. You know, a city just north of here in Fulton County just passed a huge big bond, and you know what they did? They actually said, we're writing a bond resolution, and here's the number, but we'll get you the project list later. And they put that on the ballot, and then a month later, while the ballot had verbiage was already sent to the, the county for putting on the ballot, then they figured out what the project list was going to be, and they just threw it out there. And it was within a 30-day timeframe, and they didn't have a citizen committee at all. Right? So the level of, you, you start looking at, when people talk about capital bonds and funding and so on, I, I also look at the level of transparency outreach and what we're trying to provide to the citizens. I'm not saying that what other cities do is an excuse that, you know, was it 70, is over 70% yes vote for $104 million bond in, in all three questions passed in Roswell? So when people start asking low-level questions, I always look at what other cities do, where they have raised bonds. Brookhaven floated a bond for, you know, $40 million in 2018. We've, we've got other bonds passing and so on, so we, we're trying to leverage best practices, but yes, we're going above and engaging the public on the process, so I look forward to continuing moving forward. And yeah, let's have some kind of timeline checklist, and yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman Harris. Just to explain one of Joe's acronyms, CIP is Capital Improvement Project. I know that we tend to speak in acronyms, so that is, when he referred to the CIP several times, that's what that is. In, when the past, when we receive the plan back from the PATH Foundation and, and, and the committee meets again, will they then look at the, the, the projects on the PATH list and put those in yellow? Is that the plan, or how, how do you all see that working once that PATH project and plan is, is received?
A lot of it's going to end up being on how the final PATH work product is resolved. So in, in the February, March timeframe, as it starts to grow up and, and starts, as I say, put a staple in it, they may come back and revisit this list in total. The list that was presented to them may be irrelevant when the PATH project is put together. Part of the discussion became, do we talk segments? Do we talk long arcs? Do we talk criteria? So part of it, they would revisit what the PATH project recommends.
So then, once we have that and we're marrying everything together, is there a plan to prioritize within the three different groups?
We, we actually recommended throughout the process not to rank in the final part to say important or not important. So in other words, rank the sub-things to give you so you can see easily, and then choose from that important, or let's just say, not in the category of important, because not important gives a different connotation.
Again, thank you to Jay and Tom. I know that was a lot of work, and thank you to the PATH Foundation and everybody who came in the evening, and thank you to the committee members.
Councilwoman Lawton-Mucker.
No questions. I think it's great to have this citizen input, and my neighbor went through this as a brand-new committee member, and it was serious work, and she appreciated being guided so well and having her voice heard. So thank you both for putting that together.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll just echo that, and I, and I think one really nice thing about this committee is, just from what I've seen, it was what I would consider a nice cross-section of the city. So, you know, I think we all have our ideas of what we think are the important projects, but it's nice to kind of ground-truth that against a group of citizens that really dug in. I mean, I don't, I don't think you often get that. When you get citizen feedback, you might get specific project or specific issue, but to have someone kind of dig in this comprehensively, I really appreciate that. I, it, it makes me wonder if there are other options for the future to engage similar groups of citizens to help study issues more, and I don't know what those might be, but I'm, I very much appreciate the work that was done here and, and how eager I, I believe all the, the citizens were to help guide us in our decisions moving forward. So I appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
All right, so I want to thank Councilman Lambert for taking this on Above and Beyond. You know, my idea with doing this was based on some things I'd seen in other communities. And the example I gave the committee at their first meeting was, well, first I said, you know, this is as strange as it is, we're not thinking about this fiscally. We just want to understand. We want assistance in looking at our unfunded projects and where they may fall in public's priority, and to get feedback, and to offer another opportunity for public feedback. But the example I gave is that in some city where it's cold and they have hockey, and they have a public hockey facility, the council's plan was to build a whole new hockey facility or renovate the whole facility. I guess it wasn't to build new. And what the committee came back with is, yes, we support the renovation of the facility, but in the meantime, you have to renovate the bathrooms, and you have to find funding. That rises above the rest of the facility. You've got to do the bathroom. So that's just a simple example of the kind of feedback we were looking for. I think this list is very helpful, and we can integrate it as Councilman Secunder is during our retreat. We can, we make budget change, mid-year budget changes. An important thing for the public to understand is about five years ago, DeKalb switched from, is that the right timing, host to SPOST? So what I don't think everyone understood was, is that host funds, which were used for capital, weren't particularly restricted. We could use them as a city and as a county for any capital need. When we were allowed by our legislature to vote switching to a SPOST, that was much more restricted. In fact, the mayors of DeKalb, we call it a baby SPOST. So other city, other counties that have a SPOST, they have, don't have the restrictions we have. So they get their capital funding from their SPOST, which is your penny sales tax that's voted or approved, and they can use it for virtually any capital improvement. They have to publish a list ahead of time. There are rules. We cannot. Ours was pretty much limited to transportation and public safety. All right, so one of the changes that I'm not 100% sure that certainly the mayors, you, you know, we wanted to go to a SPOST, but one of the changes that we faced is, is that we're not allowed to use SPOST funds for park funding. Is that correct? Yes, right. So currently, Is that correct? Yes, right. So currently, the mayors are working, the committee of the mayors and Jay are working with DeKalb County as we plan for the next SPOST vote to allow, to ask the legislature to allow us to include parks. Um, so when we look at what we can use our SPOST funding for, it is very restricted. So I can't say to staff, please let's use SPOST funding and do the bathroom at Waterford Park. And so we have to use it for the things that the voters approved, which were in our transportation plan essentially. Trade, you know, paths, sidewalks, roads, not paving. Does SPOST pay for paving? Yes, SPOST pays for paving. Okay, yes, SPOST pays for paving. So anyhow, that's a big change for us. So when, so we are, we've adjusted through that change. And as we move forward, but one of the things for everyone to remember is, is that it's not as simple as just moving money around because their pockets, a fair amount of our capital money is restricted. Um, I think this is really good feedback. Council doesn't have to agree with all of it, you know, at the end of the day. But I think it's really good feedback. I think some of it's interesting. A lot of it's interesting. It's all interesting. You know, some things I might have ranked differently, but I appreciate everybody's perspective. And uh, I look forward to the next steps, which involve figuring out or working together to weave it into what we already have planned. You know, looking at some of the things that we have planned and maybe we need to shift things around, you know, once we get through the PATH process. Um, and figuring out what that looks like. Uh, and then what happens with SPOST is a big deal. Like, so we'll know, I think in the next, what do you say, Jay?
I, I hope to know by early February if we can do it. If that would change the SPOST to Big Boy's SPOST.
Right. So, because it has to happen during the legislative session. So we'll certainly know if it's not going to happen by the end of February.
Yeah.
Probably. I mean, they can, right, if we don't have, but it, so we, citizens will vote on SPOST in November, no later than November of twenty-three. Um, and if it, because it ends in twenty-four.
Correct. It ends in, in April of twenty-four.
Right.
The vote is in November. We're a weird month to start off with.
Right. So so um, I know that the committee has they've started talking about it. So um, and I think Mr. Thurman is open to expanding it.
He is supportive.
Supportive.
He is supportive.
Of expanding it. So we will work with our delegation to see that perhaps that can happen. All right. May twenty-twenty-four would be the new revenue. Yes. And go ahead.
Um, yeah, no, thank you. I just want to respond to a few comments that were made. Uh, first, and, and Jay did a good job of addressing the question about, you know, why? And, and you know, this really grew out of the discussions we had last spring about a potential bond referendum. And comments made that we needed more input from our citizens. So that's exactly what the purpose of this was. And I, I think we, we got that. And with that, I'll say also, um, although the committee was only nine members, um, in addition to their comments, the, a lot of the committee members mentioned that they were out there talking to their neighbors and talking to their friends and talking to people in the community to solicit their feedback as well from these lists. So they did a really good job, I think, of not just putting their own spin on it, but talking to their neighbors and friends and finding out really what the community was thinking, not just the nine members here. So I think, I think, I think we have a good representation of, of what the community was thinking on these topics. And a, as far as the, the, the funding, um, John, your points were all taken about if these are priorities, we should get on them. But just keep in mind that we didn't have our first meeting until September. Uh, and the budget committee was well underway. The budget was approved before we came up with the final list. So uh, we really couldn't have done that. The whole purpose at the outset was to, to gear up for twenty-twenty-three and for the council to take this list as a, as a guide for us and then uh, make funding recommendations from that. So um, so that's where we are. I just wanted uh, to, those are the kind of the comments I heard that I just wanted to address, but obviously, if anyone has any other questions or feedback, just let me know. And once again, thank you, Jay, for all your work.
Thank you all. And we look forward to continuing this process as the new year begins. All right. Now, now it's consent. Councilman Henigan.
Um, there's a number of items on the consent agenda. I will move to approve and then make amendments. Move to approve.
Okay. I need a second.
Second. Now that there's a second um, discussion, I have an issue with number five. Richard, I believe, is in the room. Richard, if I could ask a couple of questions and then we could put that on the approval. At least he wasn't.
Yeah, we know, Richard Plait.
Richard Plait, I'm sorry, Richard, number five. Just a couple of quick questions, Richard.
Pull it up on the screen.
They can. It's the capital project closeout and reallocate funding. I believe it happened at the end of the last meeting. Um, there's two items that are being funded. One is the Winter's Chapel funding. And why are we putting money to that? Is that over budget? Where are we doing? What, what's happening there? Why is that money going there?
You said it correctly. It's over budget. We're just truing up actuals to budget.
Okay. Um, another item that I'm seeing, I'm happy to see funding sidewalks. But we're now funding Old Village Run, which has been completed for, it seems like a long, long time. What's, why are we funding Old Village Run?
Well, that, to take a look at that, I don't have it in front of me. And I might need to ask Michael, just so.
It's not a large amount of money. It's maybe nine, I don't even have it in front of me. It might nine.
And it might be another one where we're truing up actuals to budget as well.
Okay.
I can verify that.
I mean, that project, that project is, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, it's done, but it, so you're just closing off the books. We're nine thousand over budget and you're truing it up, I guess.
I believe that's the case, but I can verify that for you.
Okay, that's the only questions I had on number five. Does anybody else have any questions on?
Do we need to move number four? Okay, that's fine.
Okay, since nobody, thank you, Richard. Since my questions on number five are now answered, I'm good to approve. Um, I'd like to pull off number four and approve five, six, seven, and eight. Um, I'd like to make a motion to amend to approve the consent agenda for five, six, seven, and eight, pulling off number four to be the new number eight.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we're going to vote, just to clear, the emotion on the floor has been, oh, we have to vote on the amendment first.
Correct.
So the amendment is uh, to approve five, six, seven, and is really just to approve number four off, right?
Yes, we're taking four off.
Okay, we're taking four off. Okay. All right. All in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Uh.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. And now we're back to the now consent agenda minus number four. Um, which is uh, any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. That's the amended motion. And then number four will now become, I guess, eight.
Number eight, correct.
Number eight. It'll be the first item under business. Whenever, whenever you're.
Mayor, just want to make sure. Madam Clark, are you all right with what just happened? You got it?
I got it. Yes, sir. Thank you. And Sharon, do I need you to read or can we, are you ready? For us to go to the new number eight?
I am ready.
Okay, all right. So this is the approval of, do you probably have to read it?
Um.
Wait, do you have to read it, Sharon? The approval of the two thou, I can read it. The approval of two thousand, November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting minutes.
Move to approve with an edit.
Move to approve. Yeah, I think you have to.
Move to approve with an amendment to edit.
Okay. Second, move by Rob, second by Stacy. Okay. You want to clarify what the edit is?
Yeah, we received feedback from Mr. Hirsch in the public comment section on page two. And he requested that his comment be corrected in the second sentence to say ten citizens showed up instead of ten staff showed up.
Residents.
Right, I'm sorry, ten residents. Thank you.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Your men is or your men is, they're not somebody that's busy.
Right, but he's at. He's, he is correct. He's correct. Otherwise, we wouldn't have changed it.
So.
It was just a wording.
So it will read now ten residents and Councilman.
Yeah, page two.
And, and, and was it Councilman Lambert that was there?
No, it was Councilman Henigan.
Ten, ten residents and Council, uh, Councilman Henigan showed up in lieu of the words ten staff.
That was for the police meeting.
Right, that was for the public meeting about police. Very done. Okay, whenever you're ready, Sharon, I can call the question. Okay.
Did we second that?
Yes. Stacy seconded.
Okay, thank you. I just want to.
Rob, right, you seconded.
I accept.
Wait, okay, sorry, wait a minute. Did you second it? I thought you did. No, 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 okay. So I think his motion to approve was, he made the amendment with the motion to approve, which probably is not proper. Someone, anyone? Is that okay?
No, no, you do, no, no, no.
I'm sorry.
I know, me too. Um, so you need to, uh-huh, sorry.
And, right, Mr. Attorney, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that he could make a motion to approve the minutes with the following correction.
Is what he said, which is what he said. He said edits. And then Stacy did second it. Okay, now, Tom.
I, I would just like to request one additional edit while we're.
That's fine.
Uh, page seven, the second paragraph. Um, it says Councilmember Lambert, but it, it actually should be Councilmember Laughtonbacher. Uh, that was in the, the council comments. I just.
Oh, okay.
That's actually an amendment to the motion unless it's just accepted by the movement.
Rob, will you accept that? Thank you, Stacy. Do you accept that? Okay.
Since we're having fun, I can add one more.
Okay. Without you. Okay, go ahead.
Um, in number thirteen, there are question marks with no proof of who did what. If we could take a look at number thirteen on the concern, the minutes.
Oh. Oh, I see that. No idea.
I would have to look at the meeting, to be honest with you. I don't know how I missed that. I apologize.
Just defer.
We can defer.
A table.
Let me raise one more since we're at it.
Okay.
Number eleven, eleven is missing results. It has no results in the meeting minutes. And I believe action was taken.
Yeah. Okay, so we're just going to, so if there's a motion on the floor and someone wants to table, what's the proper procedure?
I think, I think the movement can withdraw the motion to approve and we start all over.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Stacy withdraws her second, right? Okay, all right. So then we need, so we're through talking about it. Everybody's since sharing your feedback. Let's, and um, we will, I need a motion to table. We can't defer because.
It's not a deferral because there's number five here. So it's a table.
I move to a table, the um, minutes pending edits and revisions to, to make them uh, accurate.
Second.
Move by Rob, second, we cannot have any further discussions. Second by Stacy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion to table things. Right. We should send the. Whenever you're ready.
The next item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend chapter four alcoholic beverages of the city of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances to amend alcohol licensing requirements for businesses and other purchases purposes. Paul Lanhart.
All right. Good, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. We don't have any changes from the first read for you tonight. Um, I quickly just want to summarize what we're, what we're doing. Um, first, we're changing the fifty-fifty split for alcohol and food sales of the current sixty-forty split, sixty percent food, forty percent alcohol to a fifty-fifty split. The second is we're introducing two new concepts to the alcohol ordinance. Um, one is the personal improvement services that would be allowed citywide to sell liquor with the appropriate licensing. Two is the spectator entertainment sports that would be allowed to sell liquor in the entertainment districts. And then there are specific requirements for these that are part of the uh, part of the package. Um, and then this version does not include any changes to hotels compared to the existing regulations. Um, with this, I'll be ready to answer any questions you may have.
All right, I'll start down here. Any questions?
Um, no, I, I just, just a comment. Um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I still, I, I still, I, there was a little bit further explanation on the, on why restricting it to entertainment districts. I'm still not convinced I'm sold on that. That said, I'm not going to say that we have to change that now. I would, I, what I would like to request, though, is that perhaps we uh, staff revisit that uh, port, segment of this, the, the change to see if, if, if an amendment in the future would, would be appropriate so that, um, because I, 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 I don't necessarily see that we're really opening up a floodgate of problems by allowing these, these issues, uh, city, uh, these establishments citywide. Um, you know, and we shouldn't restrict areas from like Georgetown or Winter's Chapel area from having the same businesses available to them. So, so I, I, I guess all I want to do is just request that we revisit this after an appropriate amount of time has passed to say, yeah, it's a good thing we did it because, or now let's, we could explore. But other than that, I, I appreciate the work on this.
We'd be happy to bring the numbers back. So if we, if we wait a year, so we, we'll see how many of those we get and then we'll, we'll bring that before y'all. And then we can uh, sort of reconsider.
Uh, likewise, if, on that same topic, if, if we could track any businesses that tried to apply for something that were outside of the entertainment district, just so that we know, was there a demand that was turned away because of, of that? Thank you.
I'll, I'll echo a lot of what you said. The only thing I was going to add is let's pick an actual timeline. I like that you mentioned a year. That seems to, it'll kind of encompass all the seasons. Beyond that, I'm, I'm happy with this.
Um, I have a quick question. Well, I have two. One point that, just so everyone knows, is that if for some reason this doesn't work well, we, we can't revoke alcohol license, but we're allowed to change the rules, correct?
That, that, that is correct.
I mean, we see it happen all the time. There's cities, anyway, not necessarily the specifically. The second thing is, is I too am kind of concerned about the rest of the city. And I'm not sure we're going to have a timeline that makes sense because most of the businesses that have expressed interest or expressing interest for High Street, which at the earliest is opening in spring of twenty-four. So what I think would be helpful is, is if you would come back in six months. So whatever month that is, because I thought it was May a minute ago, so I'm not the one to tell you. But um, I think that might be May, but just come back late spring and let's have a discussion about who's come in to apply or what we think it looks like. Um, if, if existing businesses have come in and inquired, if y'all could just keep a tally. And of course, if something raises its head before then, you know that you can always approach us. All right. So anybody else have anything? John?
Yeah, you just touched that on for the last second. Um, I too, when you mentioned the High Street, so far down the road, the one-year window doesn't make any sense because they're not, it's not going to be way outside that window. But if somebody in Georgetown wanted to open up a painting type wine sipping, something or another, what is the process to make that happen? We don't modify this ordinance. They would get a, is there a permit or an allowance? What's the process if, if a one-off wanted to open in Georgetown?
So for, for wine sipping, um, they can do that under the current regulations and they'll be able to do that. If they wanted to do a liquor sipping, um, first they would put an application in. We would either hear about it sort of informally and then we were happy to track that. Um, otherwise they, they would submit an application. We would reject the application because it doesn't meet the current standards and then we would track that as well.
All right. So there really, besides changing the ordinance, there's no way to allow it then for the, for that?
No.
Okay, thank you. But I just want to make sure that we're aware of what's possible. Thank you.
Um, I, I just want to point out that High Street is currently in an entertainment district, so.
No, 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 I know, but that's where most of these businesses, like the barber shop and the putt-putt golf place, I don't think they appreciate me calling putt-putt. It's not putt-putt. But the potential uses, and the reason it's important to them now is they have to start lining up their financing and they're doing, they'll sign their leases. And so that's why it's important for us to address it now. But my point is, is that a year from now, none of these businesses are likely to have opened.
So I understand. Thank you.
Gotcha. Okay, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none. Thank you, staff, for bringing this to us. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is funding authorization for one twenty-four perimeter center west phase one storm repairs. Carl.
Want to see my screen? Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. On the following project is a request for approval of storm repairs at one twenty-four perimeter center west. Little bit of background. This was a combined discovery, part in part due to our routine maintenance schedule. Our surveying team was inspecting the system and we also got a call about a depression in the sidewalk. It didn't, it turns out it wasn't related to the storm system, but we were already investigating the system. It's approximately four hundred feet, seventy-eight and forty-eight inch CMP. It's about twenty feet deep section under, depending on the location, four to six lane section of perimeter center west. Needless to say, it will be a catastrophic financial burden if this system were to fail. So this is by definition a proactive maintenance project that we're doing to restore this system from marginally serviceable to poor to back to serviceable condition. CCT footage standard for metal pipe corrosion, visible holes. And during the inspection, we found water leaking into one of the joints of the pipe. We tested it and we, it was positive for fluoride. So we know that there's a potable, potable water source that's leaking into the twenty-four inch line, the one that's not highlighted here on the right. Spin casting contractor, they work all over the southeast and they're available to mobilize next week. So we decided about the project in two phases. Phase one is to repair the two larger storm drains at the bottom of this culvert. The forty and the seventy-eight inch CMP's with spin cast lining. Pressure grout the joints. And there's a perennial stream that's running through that larger pipe. So it's going to require approximately two weeks of bypass pumping to perform all the repairs. Estimated cost plus a ten percent contingency is four hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. And then phase two, once we identify and eliminate the water service leak, then we'll repair that smaller pipe at the top. And that's approximately hundred fifty feet with cured and pace, cured and placed pipeline. And I will open it up to any questions that you may have.
Okay, anybody have questions? I have one. Oh, go ahead, Rob.
That, that four seventy-five, does that include both phases or just that first phase?
Just the first.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Can you, I appreciate that you found this on routine maintenance. Can you describe the routine maintenance system for all stormwater pipes? How long would it take for the whole city to be reviewed?
What we typically do is we follow the guidelines stated in our NPDS permit. And what we have to do is we have to inspect twenty percent of our entire system on an annual basis. We have to inspect the entire system over five year period.
Okay, okay, that's great. Thank you.
Um, obviously, that stormwater pipe is underneath a very high traffic volume area.
Yes.
How does that work when we're gonna start fixing that?
It's a trenchless repair, so we don't have to. We, we're gonna potentially in some areas maybe close one lane. But that's the reason why we want to perform proactive maintenance. You have to dig that thing out. It would probably cost our entire budget to replace it.
Uh, yeah, Carl, just a quick question. So phase two is going to be addressing the, the actual water leak. Are we in any danger of the repairs we do now failing because the source that what, that water leak has not been addressed yet?
No, um, the, the, the way that that water is leaking into the system is above the line. And like I said before, what we're gonna do is, once we eliminate that, that, that water source, we're going to do some additional pressure ground to fill any voids that we find. So right now, only thing we're doing is stabilizing the two pipes at the bottom. We'll finish up the rest in the second, second phase of the repair.
Anybody else? So I do we know when we'll do the second phase? Is it not like immediate after the first phase?
As, as soon as, as soon as we, we're collaborating with the cab right now, as soon as we identify where exactly the water leak is coming from.
Okay.
And they are able to make the repairs, then we'll go ahead and schedule the third notes phase.
And you know that we can reach out to our county commissioner if they're not timely, please.
I, I will take you.
Okay, please. Cause, yeah. All right, this is an action item. Any further questions? Move by John.
Second.
Second by Rob. I have a question. Oh, no, it's not related, Austin. Any further, no further discussion, seeing none. I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, Sharon. Carl, do you know if they finished on the Vermont, the Shambly Dunwoody pipe replacement today? Do you have any idea? I, I drove by there and I didn't see any backed up traffic, so I don't know.
Todd, Todd's here.
Okay. Okay, I'll ask him. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a discussion item.
Good evening. Can you start with your, an answer?
Yes, please.
To your question.
Yes.
Were you speaking about the Spalding?
No, the, uh, I thought it was Shambly, was Shambly Dunwoody and Menjay or Noreen. It was by the library.
No, ma'am, it's actually scheduled for tomorrow. There'll, there'll be certain on tomorrow.
Okay, that's all our media, social media said today. So they might not have come today, but the information we had from the county, it's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm here to talk about the, an upcoming request for a contract, executed contract with Ogletree Enterprises to do landscaping on the Shambly Dunwoody Spalding Drive intersection project. This is a common just the final step, if you will, on these projects that we're doing around the city. And we posted bids back in October, opened those in mid-November. And we received two bids at, at the bid opening from Ogletree and Greener Pastures with Ogletree being the lower of the two. We did receive a third bid after the posted date, which we rejected because it was submitted late and via email, not in accordance with the, their requirements, bid requirements. After, after review, we determined that there were some, some items that, that Ogletree had missed in their bid based on. He, he basically had priced it based on the, the planting plan as opposed to the bid schedule. We did confer with the with John and confirmed, John Gates, and confirmed that we were allowed to clarify with Ogletree and come up with a revised number of seventy-nine thousand, seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, which we're requesting. We do, we do have, we do have funds available in the tree fund budgets as well as project budget funds to, to make up the balance. This will allow us, will have a net increase in the actual number of trees replaced from those that were originally removed during the construction project, during the construction projects, which is a, which is a plus. And so we're recommending to Mayor and Council that we, that the city manager or a designated rep allow us to execute those construction documents and award to Ogletree Enterprises in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, nine thirty-six. And with an additional twelve thousand, five hundred for periodic watering, which we occasionally implement if the weather doesn't cooperate. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, does anybody have questions or comments? Tom?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Todd. So you addressed it a little bit. I just want to get a little more clarity on the, on the bits, because the original bid was like one-third of the other bidder. And, and certainly the, the other bid could have been inflated, but when there's that much of a disparity, it leads me to have some questions. And then I know you mentioned there were some things left out, but even when those things were added in, it was still far half, less than half of the other one and lower than the one that was disqualified. Have we worked with Ogletree before? Do we?
We have. Actually, I wanted to mention that they did the work on North Schallford, if you know, the planting in front of Reva Apartments. And they also did the plantings on the Smith property on this, actually on the Spalding Drive. It was part of our construction easement agreement with the Smiths on, on Spalding. So, yeah, that, we use them regularly.
So we're comfortable with the contractor and the revised, now that they've straightened out the bid that would, it, it meets the requirements?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine.
I still have some questions on this because it looks like they've just made errors. Either traffic control costs thirty grand or it costs four hundred dollars. Or, and those are a few. I don't know, that could be inflated, but the dogwood tree really looks like they missed some zeros, three dollars and fifty cents versus four hundred dollars. So when we accept this, they'll have to buy the three dollar and fifty cent tree or that, that just seems like an, it seems like an error. And given that you already know they're errors.
Probably three fifty, but I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't prepare that document. It was done in my absence, but I think it was three hundred and fifty dollars. I can confirm.
Three fifty each. So, so it's just concerning.
I think we need a pause on this. I mean, I don't, I'll give counsel. I mean, this is a discussion item anyway, but this is messy in my mind. I don't, I'm not a contracting expert. And I may have misunderstood you. Did Oglethorpe get theirs in on time?
Ogletree.
Ogletree.
They submitted on time, Mayor. What they, what they did was they, they used the planting list that was on the landscape plan, which included about ninety percent of the trees that were, that were included on the bid schedule were on the planting list. What we did on the bid schedule was to add several items to clarify that they had included soil amendments, traffic control as they were offloading their equipments and, and, and materials. And, and also that they state the trees. And, and then we also increased the quantity of mulch because we're actually wanting to be plant, putting down additional two hundred cubic yards of mulch in the area that is currently being, where we're doing the storm crossing at the bottom of the hill near the Sandy Springs city limit.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Something's gotta give here, Eric. Something's gotta give. This is too messy.
Sure, no, I was looking, looking over at the bid. I mean, it, it depends which dogwood, I mean, for example.
No, but it, but it's the process makes me uncomfortable. I don't, I can't speak for all accounts. So go ahead, Stacy.
And I think that part of it, you know, when you look at the bid and, and the way it is, I'm, I'm thinking that it is, and it's in, it's in order. It's up to y'all if you're not happy with, with the, the overall process. But they did submit, you know, timely.
On Ogletree. So, but how does one, I mean, I am, I, how does one company estimate thirty thousand dollars for traffic control and another four hundred and eighty-five dollars?
And I don't know, I mean, I can't speak for that one, but I think maybe they weren't at the meeting, the pre-bid meeting. They just threw a, threw a number out there hoping they're gonna get the bid. That's not unusual.
And the price of the dogwood trees? I mean, it's probably some kind of mistake, but.
Well, well, you can, I mean, you can buy, I'm looking, I pulled it up because I'm kind of curious, you know, nine ninety-five is, is a price, a retail price for that particular tree. And so nine dollars and ninety-five cents. So they, they're getting it from a nursery. I wouldn't, that's, it's y'all's call. It does not bother me. From as far as, as far as the bid, everything else is in line. If you look at the, the holly trees, three oh five versus five hundred, those are all in line. All the other bids are in line. There are only two discrepancies between the two bids primarily. One is traffic control and the other is the price per do, per dogwood.
No, no, look, look at that first section, like, like four hundred and eighty-five dollars traffic control, thirty thousand. Site prep and weeding, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifteen thousand. Those are some, I mean, those are some vast differences.
And, 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 and Ogletree might be right, that that might be it. And the other, and the other firm might have been out to lunch.
I don't know, but I just kind of want to make sure.
It's not uncommon for, well, it's, it, it, yeah, I mean.
We know that. We know that there are differences all the time because we see them. Very often, we, sometimes I ask about them. Sometimes I'm actually right.
Right.
But what concerns me is that we have these differences plus a muddy process. And at a minimum, before we vote on this, I think we need to hear from John Gates and an attorney about whether the letting them amend is legal. That's the stuff that I had, I wasn't even as concerned about the price differences as I was the process.
How good, how long is the bid good until?
Through the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay.
That gives us time.
It gives us time.
It was a discussion item anyway. We weren't voting on this today. John, go ahead.
We can have John Gates in the next, I'm sorry, in the next meeting.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, one other minor item. In the memo itself, there's a link to the RFP. The RFP link, when you go into it, is not active. So here we are up on council trying to do our due diligence to look at the RFP and we can't. So it's just those background stuff. If you look at the document, you can't work it backwards to.
Oh, it's working online. Oh, yeah, yeah, mine is working. Oh, click the link on the page. Oh, gotcha. Okay.
That's the.
That's the, right, that's a supporting document. Okay, sorry. Right, I just, I, Eric, y'all gotta straighten this out, please.
And can I just make one more comment? It's one of the things that concerns me on this is, is a lot of the savings seem to be in the, in the preparation and the soil amendments and the, in the, in the site preparation. I'm not by any means a landscaper, but I did take a class once. And the thing that stuck, the most dangerous thing, right? But the, the one thing that stuck out to me is the instructor said, if you have ten dollars to spend on a plant, put a one dollar plant in a nine dollar hole. Because basically it's the so, so soil amendments and the preparation that's gonna make the stuff that you put there last and survive. And so if we're cutting corners in the, in the soil amendments and the preparation, I, I'd, I'd be concerned. And, and there's a substantial price difference there.
Joe, go ahead.
So Todd, I was hoping to look at the bid, if it actually had a, I doubt that it's in the weeds, but does it actually have a landscape plan? Is there a drawing, a design of where things are gonna go?
Yes, there is.
You don't happen to have that like spun up that you could show us real quick? No, if it's gonna take more than.
It probably would take a few minutes.
Cause I'd like to know about, cause you know, we have in this other holistic conversation that we haven't had yet as a council to define what a streetscape looks like in the city of Dunwoody. And, you know, I, I, I respect and appreciate everything staff has done to date and where we're building things out, but I'm especially can, want to have an education and see what council provides of saying, if I'm walking along a sidewalk, should I have deciduous shade trees above me covering me? And is it separated? Is it in the landscape buffer between the cars and the sidewalk? So I, I'm especially interested in knowing where the curb ends where motor vehicles are driving, what that landscape buffer looks like before we get to the sidewalk. I'd like to see what's planning in there.
Yeah, there, in this particular case, it was no, there's a, basically we have about a two or three foot strip, so we're not able to plant in the beauty strip on this project. We are, and we are also limited by overhead power lines. So a lot of the, a lot of the planting that is there is to provide additional screening, which was one of the things that the residents had really stressed was the fact that they were concerned about the amount of trees that had been removed and just trying to provide additional privacy there. And so the trees that have been selected are, are ones that would, will allow for, for greater screening, but also stay underneath the power lines within the, the George Power Eastman.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, the Arbor Vity, Holly, Cryptomeria, those are all screens, evergreen, Magnolias are evergreen as well.
I'll be happy to share the, the plans.
If you get that the next time, if we revisit it. And then the funding, you mentioned there's some in the project fund, some in the tree fund. Do we have a breakout?
Forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars is, will come from the annual tree fund budget. The balance would come from the project funds, capital project budget.
I'd be curious to know. Okay, and that's, is that twenty twenty-two tree fund budget or is that current year?
I would have to.
Be curious to know. And then what is the balance on that? Or I don't, you know, I know it's rolling, but oh, it'll, it'll roll over.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we don't, you know. Always curious, because, because, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward with the PATH Foundation, everybody else. Look, we have Winter Chapel coming up. There's places and opportunities within the city where we can apply that tree fund really strategically. But yeah, we want to make it shaded, welcoming and a buffer between the cars and, and the people off on foot, you know. Where we have North Schallford, we've got Georgetown coming onboard. Maybe that might be another good opportunity because Georgetown is in the pipeline and we're getting really close to maybe just give us a refresher potentially, Todd or Michael. Just to give us a, hey, by the way, here's what we're, we're planning to do along Shambly Dunwoody potentially, right? Because it's gonna be from Chateau up to.
Actually, that'll, that'll be starting soon. They'll be planting the trees in, in that buffer before the end of the year.
Yeah, it'd be, be, be nice to just get an update of what that looks like from a citywide and then, yeah. But all right, thanks, thanks. Thank you, Todd.
Councilman Harris.
I just had one more comment that I thought was important to point out, the fact that we're. I just had one more comment that I thought was important to point out, the fact that we're planting more trees and we had to cut down for the, for the project. I mean, I know every time a tree is cut down, when we're doing an intersection improvement, you know, we get the emails, we see the social media. We are actually replacing more trees than were cut down for this project, so we understand that improvements need to be made, but you know, we have a tree fund and we're replacing more than we took down, so I think that's important to note.
And Eric, I'll work on fixing this, all right, any further questions or discussion on this, thank you, we will see you again.
Okay.
Us, public comments? Nope. City manager?
Yes, ma'am, we did an executive session for personnel and litigation, litigation.
Okay. Council comments, start with Tom. Nope, anybody? No, go ahead.
Just a quick nuance to the public that are listening to the recording, we have these projects in flight. Their trails, their sidewalks, intersections and so on. And if you look at our twenty twenty-three budget, we approved a new headcount for a transportation planner. And that person is foc, maybe hopefully focused on pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, traffic calming and so on. And, and the word is planner. And Shambly has a planner, they've had a full-time planner for years, it's not something a one-off, and this is, by the way, for three years, it's coming from a federal, federal grant. But Shambly, same size city as ours roughly, of course, they've had a planner for years, I look at lake-size cities, Roswell has planner, a transportation planner, City Springs, Sandy Springs, City Springs, excuse me, Sandy Springs as well. So what I mean to say is, we've got projects in flight that I don't want to say good, bad or indifferent, they may have been engineering-led efforts. Rather than planning-led efforts. And what I'm trying to ask and let the public know is, we're bringing in a, the PATH Foundation, the premier planning organization for multi-use paths in the southeast and possibly the whole United States, having built three hundred and forty-one miles. We're bringing those professionals' expertise for their planning expertise. So they will engage and will, will do a good job engaging the public. So what I'm looking forward to in the future is that we have planning-led efforts, where we're engaging with the public with this planner first. And then we're bringing in engineers after we've got a really great feedback and, and know where we're gonna go. So just a nuance, when people ask me, why are we down the path here, well, we're down the path because we follow our transportation plan and we're doing what people have said in our comprehensive, that's a plans and all of our master plans. But, you know, the planner is gonna help lead those planning efforts as well. And, and the last thing is in twenty twenty-three, we're actually gonna be doing another community survey, it'll be a scientific modeling. It'll be last two times when it was done by Kennesaw State University. So it's gonna really provide feedback to us to really get to people to find out what their needs and desires are, so thank you very much.
The lights at Brook Run Park are gonna be turned on at, on Thursday, December first, very exciting, they'll be up for the month of December. We have two trees now in Dunwoody Village and Monora. Two trees, yeah, but, well, there's two barn, the holiday trees, Christmas trees, we have two Christmas trees, thank you, we have lots of trees in Dunwoody Village. We're getting very festive here with our goal long-term for Dunwoody to be the holiday home for Metro Atlanta. So with that, I need a motion for executive session for personnel and legal.
Move.
Nope, somebody has to make the motion.
To exit the executive session for purposes of personnel and litigation, litigation.
Bye, Councilwoman here. Seconded by Rob, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll be back.
Need a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
Moved by Stacy.
Second.
Second by Catherine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned.